I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republican public, for which it stands indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second, McVeigh.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Want to oppose any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
This is Siren. I move we approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of $508,198, unpaid bills in the amount of $258,357,93, and gifts in the amount of $2,014,31 for this board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Want to oppose any abstentions? There a discussion at all? Evidently not. Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
It is School Board Recognition Week, and as such Burlington Community School District greatly appreciates the following, and Greg is going to play for you the little video that will go out on Twitter, Facebook, and Greg. Thank you for your service to Burlington Community School District's students, staff, and our community. Again, that will be available for viewing on Cool Facebook and Twitter. I hope each of you had a good Mother's Day. To echo what Annika said earlier, thank you for the videos on Teacher Appreciation Week. They were well received. We did receive notice from the Office of Civil Rights with concerns about our webpage. Today Greg and I spoke with attorney from Allers. We also had Brian Johnson run a scan on our webpage. The only thing the scan produced were one picture and two videos that had no captions. Otherwise it showed that we are in compliance with our Office of Civil Rights, and we'll continue to try to figure out exactly what they're looking for. Greg and I held our pre-board meeting with the President and Vice President, reviewed this agenda, and talked about items that may, to varying degrees, school. Mrs. Bolander, I'll mention her this week. She is an art teacher in the elementary buildings. She has been going to the lunch handouts, and she's handing out bags of art supplies to students so they can be creative at home. She's also interviewing artists and making the interviews available for students to watch, and she is another example of Burlington's teachers going above and beyond. Corey suggested that I watch the webinar, Care for Caregivers, Information for School Leaders, and Crisis Teams. We discussed that this morning in our cabinet meeting, and Corey's going to be sure that that stays in the forefront of our mind. We worked with the Burlington Police Department and President Vikström to renew the Resource Officer Agreement. The item was time-sensitive, as the document needed to be presented at the City Council Meeting. Great news continues to roll out of BHS. Students Jessica Kendall and Casey Pepper were honored to present at the Iowa State History Day. They presented the 1969 Supreme Court case of Tinker versus Des Moines Public Schools. It was found that freedom of speech must be protected in public schools, provided the show of expression or opinion, whether verbal or symbolic, does not disrupt learning. The court ruled in favor of Tinker, a 13-year-old girl who wore black armbands to school to protest the Vietnam War. The two BHS girls, Jessica and Casey, placed third in distinguishable honor for the girls and their coach, Mr. Keough. Had the girls placed second or higher, they would have qualified for the national championship. And I get it. I completely understand how placing third in this nationals by the thinnest of margin feels disperaging, but in reality, 99.9% of our students never place third or higher at any type of a state championship. So given time, hopefully the girls will realize the magnitude of their accomplishment. And the past week, again, quite a few electronic meetings, just nonstop, online, listening to people talk about return to learn and those type of things. Does anybody have any questions of me at this time? Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the items for discussion. Next one is the Resilient Communities Liaison Job Description.
Good evening. This is a new position, the Resilient Communities Liaison Job. This position is in partnership with the Burlington Community School District Outreach and Grant Coordinator as the McKinney-Vento Homeless Liaison and Resilient Communities Grant Project Manager. This position is a non-administrative grant-funded position of $114,000 and will be funded through the Resilient Communities ICAP Grant for five years. The financial impact is an annual salary of $48,000 with $12,500 being reserved for benefits, but is funded through the Resilient Communities ICAP Grant for five years. The recommended action would be to approve as presented, and Cassie has joined us this evening to tell us a little bit more about this position, and perhaps if there's any questions that you may have, she is your gal, so I will let Cassie tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you, Lacey. Good afternoon, or good evening. So ICAP stands for the Iowa Child Abuse Prevention Program, and typically every five years this grant comes out, and this year they added a new component, which is to look at the community. And typically what they do is they fund local community for education and family support programs with the intent to prevent child maltreatment before it occurs. And so they came up with a strategic planning-type portion for ICAP this year, in order for communities to decide, is there something that you believe would be a good community collaboration around a specific area having to do with prevention of child maltreatment? And for us, homelessness is a very big area that fits into this. And so in partnership, I worked with Young House, Head Start Early, Head Start, Community Action of Southeast Iowa, Des Moines County Public Health, Early Childhood Iowa area for Des Moines, Lee, Henry, and Washington Counties, Harmony Bible Church, and the Burlington area homeless shelter, and said, you know, every week we have new families and new needs, and we seem to be very reactive in nature as opposed to being more proactive. And is there a way that we can write this grant and work together in order to identify needs of families earlier, and is there a way to stop this trajectory towards homelessness? And so together we gathered, and I wrote this grant, the Strategic Planning Grant, and there were 17 counties identified to apply, and they only awarded four, and we were one of the four that was awarded. So really the whole why or what that this position would be doing and that we would be a part of. So we'd be hiring a 12-month full-time employee, which would be fully funded by the grant. And so for five years, this individual will head up a task force, if you will, in order to work with the community and conduct a needs assessment and create a strategic plan in order to work on this topic area. And so we would be working with the community and doing needs assessment over the first kind of three years. I really anticipate a lot of trainings happening on youth homelessness, on ACEs training, on the McKinney-Vento Act, attending some state meetings and schedules, and then really kind of creating this task force that is going to carry out this needs assessment and strategic planning process. So that is kind of the who and the what and the why. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Board Member McVeigh here. After the five years is up, is there a chance for us to reapply for the grant, or is this only a five-year program and then it's done?
Well, it's a Needs Assessment Strategic Planning Grant, so it isn't a project-to-do kind of program. It's more of how, what is the need that your community has, and then what's a strategy that as a community you can get behind to kind of work towards? So ultimately, what we're hoping is that through this five-year process, we'll identify some policy and practices happening in our community from early childhood up that affects our families and affects their education, and is there a way to meet those needs in families and students earlier so that we reduce ultimately the number of homeless students that we have in the district? And so it's, no, we wouldn't renew for a needs assessment, our strategic planning process, but hopefully from here comes actionable items at the end of the five years, at the end of the four-year, five-year period, so that then we would have a plan in place that maybe then there'd be other grants we could look at, or the McKinney-Vento Act can help us fund some work for our homelessness. But ultimately, it's to benefit our community, our children.
Thank you.
Hi, Cassie. Question for you. First, I always get excited when I see Cassie's got a grant for us. Since I've been on the board, boy, you've just knocked it out of the park. I mean, we've had several grants that you've brought to us, and probably going back to the beginning was the after-school program grants, and those have just been outstanding. So thank you so much for all your work. I just have a financial question for you. Maybe this is more for Greg. So $48,000, another 12, 5, 4 benefits set aside, so you're looking at around $60,000. The grant is $114,000. Is that every year, or is that 114 for the five years, or how does that shake out?
Yep, it is every year. So in developing the budget for the grant, we put a total of about $67,000 to pay for salary and benefits. A portion of that is for me to kind of oversee this whole project. And then there's a Training and Travel category that's $11,720, Program Supplies and Materials $18,300, Contracted Services of $10,000 in case we need to bring in a facilitator to help in the actual kind of SWOT analysis. Sometimes having an outside facilitator to do that is very beneficial, and so we put some in for that. Incentives in order to help pay, reaching parents and caregivers and community members pay for transportation. So if we wanted to do the needs assessment and really have segments of the population that's difficult to do, we have $5,900 in incentives, indirect costs, so paying for our building use, heating and cooling maintenance, all the overhead that would go into that, about $7,000, and I think that's it. So yeah, so it's $114,000 for the district to do this project each year for five years.
Excellent. Thank you very much. It's exciting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have one, one more. So this position is going to be a new hire, or is this position somebody that's already doing something and we're just changing?
It is a new hire. So this is a brand-new grant-funded position with this new grant. So I'm existing, so I will oversee it and assist, but we, yeah, it's for, this job description's for new.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So we already have grant, correct?
Yes, we were just awarded the grant.
Mr. President, I move we approve this.
Go ahead, and if I make a move.
Yes?
Holes and seconds.
We had a motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
I started to make one, but I wasn't sure, so that's all right.
Aye.
All those against? We got one for, let's get the rest of us in here.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, next item is the Board Policy on the Student, the Attendance Policy.
Yes, this would be the second reading for 501.12, the High School Attendance Policy that Mr. Kane talked a little bit about last meeting. This is a new policy outlining the definition of absences, types of excused absences, general procedures concerning excessive absences, and as well as the credit recovery program and privileged suspension. So the recommended action would be to approve the second reading of Policy 501.12.
Is there a motion?
Hattaberg, yes, so move.
Second.
Okay, I've got a question. Is this a mandate, or are these just recommendations?
This is not a mandate. It is something that Mr. Kane has been working on for several years and wanted to see that change in terms of defining an absence and making it more clear and holding students accountable with regard to the attendance policy at the high school.
Okay, so this isn't cut and sewn, then?
Well, I guess, okay, I'm confused, I suppose. I thought there were some guidelines in the policy that laid out what the students were expected to do when they returned from an absence, as Mr. Kane on the meeting?
Yes, you.
Yeah, I'm here.
Was my understanding, I guess I thought these were, I don't want us to know if mandate's the right word, but I thought these were pretty, pretty specific guidelines kids were, students are expected to do when they, after they return from an absence.
Yeah, if you adopt this as a policy, it'll go into force. And so again, the teeth of it is, is that they have to follow up with the teacher. If they continue to be irresponsible and not check in and not follow up with the teacher, then they'll lose credit for the course, and they will be required to go ahead and go through and make up some of the time, probably in some employability skills training, in order to regain that credit.
Yes, I took Mr. Vikström's question as, is this something that has to be put into place, like, you know, across districts? This is something, you know, for our high school, is how I, was how I was answering that question. So yes, they would have to follow these guidelines once you put the policy into place.
That answers my question. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Annual Agreement with Luther College on Placing Student Teachers. Mr. Johnson?
We have agreements like this with many colleges, and what it allows us to do is accept our student teachers in Burlington, and I recommend that the board approve this action.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve. Kendall?
Second?
Well, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Next one is the Iowa Wesleyan Placement of Student Teachers.
The same situation. We need the board to approve this so we can place Iowa Wesleyan student teachers within the Burlington Community School.
I move approval.
There's a second.
Yes, Hattaberg's second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained? Motion passes. Next item are registration fees.
All right, can you hear me now? Yep. All right, my computer froze, so I kinda, I had to call in here. So the registration fees you have in front of you are the same as past years. There were no changes to the fees with the exception of one new fee being added, and that's the instrumental music fee at the bottom of the fee list. The reason that we're adding a new fee for this is there are costs that are currently incurred by parents in our music programs, primarily the cost of student lesson books, and it is best practice for the district to purchase those materials and then provide them for the students as opposed to requiring students to provide them. The primary reason for that is that it allows us, it allows us to give them the reduced fee option, so it reduces the barrier for low-income. It helps reduce the barrier for low-income families. So these are costs that in the past parents paid directly to wherever they would buy the materials from, so now we propose adding into the fees that will bring the purchase of those materials in-house and provide. So I would recommend the fees as presented, please.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
Hattaberg, so move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Next item are the Student Handbooks.
Yep, so you've got quite a long list of student handbooks. Now, this is just the time of year that we bring those back to you for approval. The elementary, intermediate, and middle school handbook had very few changes, and it was primarily related to formatting or maybe even slight items for space, but no changes really for the K-8 handbook. And then the high school handbook, you have the markups were in the document for you to approve. Just for those who are potentially new to the board, or just clarity sake, there are separate documents for an elementary handbook, an intermediate handbook, a middle school handbook, a high school handbook, and then there's a district handbook. And the district handbook becomes an attached document to each of these others. So when we actually post these on the websites, or we, or the rare occasions where we actually print it for somebody, they get their grade level packet, and that's attached to the district handbook. So the documents are meant to be complementary to one another, not repetitive with each other.
Questions?
I'd just like to comment that I think this is a more streamlined version, and I appreciate the work that went into doing that. Also, a lot more consistency across the elementaries, so thank you.
I would like to add that, what Ms. Hattaberg just said, the consistency across the board is a perfect message to our school district's parents and teachers and staff. So I appreciate all the hard work that went into making that more consistent and across the board so that it doesn't have a miscommunication in there. Thank you for whoever worked on that.
This is Siren. I just had a couple questions. I don't even know what page I'm on here, but this special education, it says a regular diploma will not be awarded moving forward. What will be presented to those students?
So that's probably in the high school handbook, and that's to clarify, special education kids will earn, and 99%, vast majority of the time will earn a regular diploma. That line references to a change in Iowa code a couple of years ago. There used to be a provision in code that would allow a student with a significant disability to what they used to call graduate per their IEP. To me, an IEP team could waive the statewide graduation requirements for a child. You can no longer do that, so a child in order to earn a traditional IEP must complete the same, must complete graduation requirements. Now, those graduation requirements can be modified, and in most cases they are, but they still need four credits of English, three of math, three of science, PE, health, and those other items. So as long as a child completes those credits, and they can be modified in nature, and like I said, especially for students with more significant disabilities, they are modified. But if for some reason a child doesn't complete those credits, then they cannot earn a high school diploma. And I thought that's just a clarification and the change there with me and Iowa code a couple of years ago.
Thank you. The other one, it says food deliveries from local restaurants aren't allowed, but it says a parent may bring the student meal. Was that intended to say a parent or legal guardian?
Yeah. Generally, parents and legal guardians are used interchangeably, so legal guardian is probably the right.
And my only other question was enlisting the clubs and organizations. It goes through all of the sponsors. One of them was in bright red. I just, I didn't know if that needed to be corrected before we voted on it.
Dave, do you have a, that would be in the high school one. I don't know, I'm sure if there's a specific reason.
Foreign language club was in red when the rest of them showing changes were in yellow.
Yeah, we had, we had reduced the stipend for that, but it's still a club. If some of the board that was on here, I don't know, three or four years ago, when we had to make some major budget cuts, we cut a number of different club sponsor stipends. And so that's what that's referring to. It's, it still exists, but there's not a stipend that's attached to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I've got one question.
Go ahead, Dave.
How much is it emphasized to the students and their parents that this handbook is kind of the bible of how things are going to work? I know it's real easy to blow it off, but they need to, they need to understand that it is there, and they need to understand what's in it.
I think, yeah, I think our job at the beginning of the year, of course, it looks different for how they talk about it to elementary students and what, and how they talk about it to middle school and high school students. But our administrators and their teams and teachers generally set aside time at the beginning of the year, and sometimes again, coming back from breaks to reiterate the expectations. They don't go through the entire handbook line by line, but they kind of know where the heavy items are. I think one of the things we probably could do better with this district is how do we, you know, is communicating to parents, and making sure that parents are made fully aware. I know, again, and that, you know, we have family nights and open house nights, and, you know, we could probably be maybe a little more direct in our communication to parents about it, about what our expectations are, but that can be difficult based on who is and isn't coming in. But, I don't know, Dave, high school specifically, I don't think any of the other principals are on.
So we go ahead and try to go, we refer to the handbook to the students, and then there are certain sections that we've gone over during our hound time. The teachers go over those sections of the handbook. Because there's a major change in the attendance policy, I believe Ms. Hattaberg suggested that I do a mailing to the parents, and so I'm going to go ahead and provide a very, I'll hopefully make it very um, I'll, I'll hopefully make it very clear, haven't been the best at clear communication over the last week or two, but, um, we'll make it very clear in terms of the, the scenarios, and what the, the protocol is for the student, and what the, what the parent needs to do, and things like that, um, so we will send that letter home to every single student, uh, well, every single parent or guardian, um, and, uh, make sure that we clearly outline that, that portion, the change, um, the only other big change we have was always kind of a rule, but it's in the handbook now, so that we can refer to it, and we can, um, kinda hold kids accountable, and that's that, um, students are not allowed to videotape the teacher or other students without their permission, um, in the classroom, or, or things that, I mean, we've never allowed that, but, um, legal, uh, advice from one of the workshops that the assistant principals attended through the school administrators of Iowa indicated that that verbiage is what we should use in order to enforce that, um, expectation.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just have, it's, it's that time of year, and for those who've been on the board, like you, Dean, you probably know where I'm going with this, that's, yeah, my frustration with senior privileges, uh, to me, senior privileges is not just being on track to graduate, senior privileges is something that's tied to a GPA, like a 2.0 or better, uh, as you're getting all Ds and you're on track to graduate, to me, does not constitute senior privileges, and then allow you to leave campus for lunch and so forth like, like senior privileges allow, I, I don't understand it, I've never agreed with it, and so, I'll say it again this year, I don't under, I don't think that senior privileges just means you're on track to graduate, to me, it should have, you, you are doing better than on track to graduate, you're at least getting a C average across the board, um, just because you're getting all Ds, uh, doesn't exactly, uh, make me want to reward you with senior privileges, that's just me.
Agreed. Any, any other discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
I move for the approved handbook as presented.
You barely hear that.
I move that we present the handbooks as presented.
Second.
Thank you. The second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Motion passes. Next item is the driver's education contract.
Yes, we are at the end of our three-year agreement this year, uh, with Triple R Driving School, so a proposal was sent out, uh, we did receive, uh, three responses from Open Road, Triple R, and Street Smarts, uh, Triple R was again the lowest cost at 3.35 per student, uh, and, um, which is consistent with the fee that we are currently paying, in discussion with Mr. Kane, we've been pleased, uh, with Triple R and are recommending the, uh, renewal and approval of another three-year contract with Triple R.
Any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion? Is there a motion?
I move to accept, uh, uh, accept as proposed.
All second?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Any abstentions, motion passes. Okay, next item for discussion, for the across-the-board cuts discussion.
Yeah, this is for informational purposes for the board, just in light of, you know, the, the economics of current situation related to, I think, potential impact, you know, at state and federal level, uh, I do need to, um, emphasize at this point, there has been no discussion at the state level regarding an across-the-board cut, and the information that you have, proceeding on, I'll, I'll read here in a minute, are preliminary, they're based on the budget of the year 21, which the board had certified and approved in April, but again, a reminder that at this point, the state is not set for putting the budget for next year for schools, so these numbers could change potentially, uh, also in discussion, some finance people in Des Moines, um, again, they wanted to emphasize, as per the note, that at this point, the state has not had any discussion about this, but there always is a potential, there's a lot of discussion amongst finance people over the year, um, there have been a number of, of across-the-board cuts in the state due to economic conditions, so, uh, they fully anticipate when the legislation reconvenes, uh, they will take a hard look at reducing some of, and identifying targets for budget reductions in, in lieu of trying to do an across-the-board cut, which impacts everything as well, uh, we won't know until the legislation reconvenes, and again, we, all the economic conditions are playing out, uh, and related to the COVID-19, so, but I wanted to show you, just so you can see it. This, you know, just kind of an estimate, you know, what, what is the thing? So, it's all based on, you know, our enrollment in the state aid, you can see our enrollment for next year, a thousand eight hundred and sixty, so, this would show the potential impact of a ten percent across-the-board cut, uh, have to note that there are some categorical funds for homeless from an across-the-board cut, to, you know, the personal development fund.
Excuse me, Greg?
Greg? Yes, sir.
Can you see, I think your mic's giving feedback, my computer's showing your mic spiking, could you, um, mute your mic?
Is this any better?
Well, the, it's still spiking on Nancy's. Go ahead, Greg.
Yes, if I mute my mic, you won't hear me, but, so, let me turn down my, uh, speaker volume, if that helps. Hopefully this will be a little better. Okay, but again, just to show, you know, the impact, the potential impact of an across-the-board cut, uh, it's also very important to realize and recognize that when a state does an across-the-board cut, all it affects is cash, does not affect our spending authority, so we maintain our full spending authority, we just, uh, receive a reduction in funds, um, to, uh, funder operations, so, again, this would show, you'll see here in red, you know, a ten percent across-the-board cut would have a significant impact on our cash flow, would be around, uh, 2.3 million dollars, uh, out of a total state aid of about thirty million, so, again, the difference why it doesn't exactly line out to ten percent is because some of these catic protocols are, um, held harmless and are not reduced, so, so, you know, across-the-board cut would, would have a potential impact on our, on our funding, again, it's important to remember that it doesn't affect our spending authority, and if you recall, you know, in the previous finance, um, meetings that we've had with the board, now, we are, fortunately, we are, we are in good shape with our cash reserves, so, we would be able to, you know, uh, absorb a ten percent, and the nice thing about the, uh, impact on across-the-board cut is it does, and not, while not affecting us, the spending authorities, that the districts do have the opportunity, it could be in one year, multiple years, through a series of cash reserves, in, in trying to recover, uh, the funding that is lost at the state level and state aid, so, but again, just wanted to take, show this to the board, um, we probably won't know exactly how everything plays out for, for quite a while, until, you know, the state, uh, revenues start coming through, and are, show the full impact, um, from the economic conditions, but it is a possibility, you know, again, um, I've been in the school business for eighteen years, and there's been three across-the-board cuts in the years I've been in school business, so, it's always a real possibility, and given the conditions now, something to keep in, in the back of our mind is something that could happen, but... Be glad to answer any other questions.
Greg, could you just go over the key points in the economic brief that you received from Piper Jaffray?
Yeah, some, you know, I get quarterly reviews from our financial advisors, uh, that we use for Piper Jaffray for our debt, and the one they released for the third quarter, which really just ended in, in March, and which was at the very beginning of the whole COVID-19, and they are, you know, noting that, you know, retail sales, uh, have significantly plummeted in the third quarter, uh, again, that's just in a short period of time, and the industrial production levels, uh, the biggest part of that driver is motor vehicle production, but industrial level, industrial production, they are saying are, are at recession levels, and manufacturing, uh, has fall, fallen to the lowest level in history since they've been tracking manufacturing, so, and, and they're predicting, you know, that the, uh, quarter two, uh, to use their words, the, the quarter two, uh, gross domestic product, they say will be disastrous, so, again, it's, uh, all still playing out, and a lot of it's gonna depend upon how long this, this continues on with businesses being shut down, um, and I, I do think it'll take a, a significant amount of time for the businesses to recover and get back up to previous, uh, levels of production, so...
Greg, just a question, Greg, so, we are able to spend our cash reserves, correct? But also, correct is, that's not something we can do indefinitely, right?
Absolutely, it's something we would have to monitor, you know, again, uh, once you spend it, it's gone.
Right.
We don't get it back, so, it's something, you know, that would have an impact, uh, the, the flip side of that too, is, you know, the, the reserves that we have, even though interest rates currently are basically a zero, um, uh, the cash reserves do provide us with a, a fairly significant amount of interest income, which is miscellaneous income, which does assist with our budget, so...
Right.
Again, we, it's, it's important to, to monitor those reserves and maintain those reserves for purposes such as this, 'cause, um, uh, across-the-board cuts can and do happen, so...
I believe the last time it happened, you were not in, in this position with us, um, and I believe we did use a small amount of cash reserves at the time, because it is nice to have those, but it's not something you can just, you can't spend that forever, but we are healthy with that, and that's, we worked hard to get there, and you've worked hard to protect that, so, it's not, we're not, uh, I don't wanna, I hope people don't think we're just ready to close the doors and go bankrupt, 'cause that's farthest thing from the truth, but it is worth being, uh, diligent, and aware, and, and prudent in where we go from here, and I know you're gonna do very well in leading us with that.
Absolutely, and, and again, I've talked about this before, you know, the reserves, well, they are very important to, uh, maintain just for these, these purposes, uh, when they do happen, and again, when, when we look at, and potentially, when we look at bonding for, uh, potentially for, with our new save funds, uh, even though the general fund has no impact on paying debt, uh, the, the bonding and rating agencies, uh, one of the things they do look at is the general fund reserves, so...
Anything else? Thank you, Greg. We're gonna look at this real closely, obviously, appreciate your help, next item is the school board recognition month.
Yeah, we did that at the beginning, we showed the video, if you'd like to see it again, we can, but I think once is good enough, and people can look at it online if they'd like, does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
That's fine.
Yep, that's good.
Yes.
Okay, somebody I'd like to recognize is Director McFay for what she did in putting together, I don't know whether it's considered evidence, or whether it's considered something that people enjoyed, I hope they did, but I'm, I doubt whether many of us are media stars, so hopefully the, the thought was there, and the concern was there when we talked about our, our people in this system, which I'm more and more impressed about every year.
It was fun to put together that video, but it wouldn't have been possible without all of you board members, so, thank you, and I, uh, thank the students too, that colored pictures and got those out, so we could do the student video, a lot of staff inboxed me and said it was wonderful to see their smiling faces, so, shout out to the parents and kids that made those also.
Well, thank you again. Okay, last item is board communication, we'll start with Mr. Saren.
Uh, just wanted to, again, thank the teachers for what they do, but also thank the, uh, the food service staff, uh, for what they're doing, day in and day out, and feeding a good point for the community, um, under eighteen, so...
Thank you, uh, Mr. McFay?
Uh, so just wanna thank, um, our teachers again, and then of course, the parents, um, it's just as important to thank them, 'cause they are now the homeschool teacher, um, so thank you to all of them, uh, shout out also to the food service, I have stopped at VHS and North Hill, and seeing some amazing smiling faces from the kiddos grabbing those school lunches, so that is awesome to see, um, I need to stop at Grimes and drive by and wave and say hello, but I know there's great things going on in this COVID-19, uh, pandemic that we've got going, and it's amazing to see, uh, the community and all of us in the school districts join together to try to make things better, so, thank you to everybody that's involved.
Thank you, Mr. Kendall.
Um, yeah, I assume, uh, the reason we did not discuss anything about a potential graduation date is because it's not responsible to do that yet, we don't have an opportunity to see that far as to when that might be, we've had a couple emails, people asking about that, so my comment is, we probably haven't discussed it tonight, because it really, we can't see when that could be, and until we can see when that could be, it would seem to be irresponsible to set such a date, certainly hope we can still do that, uh, also towards that end, I really appreciate Mr. Kane's, uh, efforts to put together the slideshows for the students, uh, the communications that he's had, and the staff at the high school sent out, to get that information for those students, I think is exceptional, and I'm really looking forward to seeing how that comes together. Um, that said, um, maybe somewhere along the way, communication wasn't entirely smooth, uh, and how things were being done with the handing out of diplomas at the high school, but I hope people can be a little more forgiving and a little less bitter, uh, trying to understand what all we're working with, and, uh, trying to do the best that we can for all of the students, I still think we have a fantastic staff, very proud of them, uh, Mr. Cohen pointed out Mrs. Bolander's art efforts, and, and wow, that's just out of the, out of this world, this is great, um, looking forward to Cassie Gurs Grant, like I mentioned earlier, I think that's gonna be great things for the fall, and mask up and stay safe, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Holton? Ms. Holton?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say my name, I wanna thank Brian, Brian Johnson for helping me get into the Google Classroom, I mean, it's like a thou, over a thousand different classes to look at, um, and it, and also the, um, training he sent me, so it helped me filter out things that I didn't have to speak, um, I then played around and tried to be a co-teacher, that didn't work really well, so I became a student in a few classrooms, so then I would get the information I needed to actually see the work that the teachers were, um, assigning, so I really enjoyed that, and I really wanna thank him for his help with that, and I also wanna thank, uh, Mr. Keen, I think he has taken the brunt of all the negative stuff that, um, parents have been emailing all of us, um, I really think he's doing the best he can do, is what we have to work, that's it.
Ms. Hattlerberg?
Yes, I would like to, uh, congratulate the twelve, uh, teachers, mentee teachers that are gonna graduate here virtually, um, this coming Friday, um, I think, believe there are twelve of them, and so we're pleased to have them working on our staff, and wish them the best of luck, um, I'm, also wanna say thanks to Pat, that was a great editorial. That was a great editorial and I, I do want to recognize the community members, the parents and the students for doing so much independent work. It's not what you signed up to do and so, you know, keep up the good work and thank you to all of you. I'm wondering if we are going to be able to have any kind of workshops this summer like we did last summer. To me, the communication was amazing when we met with actual administration and talked through some of our common issues and goals. And I would hope that even with COVID-19 outbreak, that we could do some sort of thing like that again this summer. And I think that's it. Everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Mr. Courtney?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, and I guess I'll finish this off. I, I hope that the people in the community don't think that we're not concerned about graduation because we are. Everybody's given a lot of thought and there's some limitations, obviously, and we're going to try and do what we can when we can. The other thing is, I appreciate Mr. Kane also and what's going on, because he's been a target of opportunity, the old military term, because it's been easy to take shots at him. I appreciate that he's, what he's doing and what he's trying to do and I, I hope he appreciates that we appreciate what he's doing. The other thing is, I'm going to steal a quote from somebody and I'm not even sure I got it from, but the quote was that education was the mother of all progress. And here we are with everybody we have in this system and they are contributing so much to it. I just wish everybody would appreciate it, but without education, we're all dead. Okay? Is there a motion for adjournment?
Real quick, before we adjourn, I would like to compliment the board on a well-run meeting and I would thank everyone for spending a little time spinning up on, on how to hold these and President Dexteron, good job.
After a while, it works out. Okay, is there, is there a motion for adjournment?
All said and most adjourned.
We're not going to fall over each other. Is there a second?
Hatterberg, second.
Thank you very much. I don't think there's any dissension. Thank you, folks. Go out and be safe. Thank you. Motion, or meeting adjourned.